The Planning Commission is now in session. We will start, I believe, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please stand.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right. Now we have a roll call.
Chair Kevin Rooney.
Here.
Vice Chair Mario Maciel.
Here.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
And Commissioner Christopher Seines.
Present.
All right, everyone's here. We now will have public communications, which anyone could speak three minutes, just state your name and residency, and it doesn't, it needs to not be on the list for tonight, just if you have something you want to say. All right. Public Communications is closed. So now we go to the consent calendar, I believe.
I move to approve the minutes from July 25th.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five to zero, passes. All right. Now we have Abraham.
Okay, so the request before you is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park adopting the findings of fact and approving a conditional use permit to allow an automobile brake repair and tire sale business within the industrial zone. Our case number is CP870, the location is 5035 Comm View, and our applicant is JMC Automotive. As you can see on the map, it's located on the west side of Comm View Avenue and south of Arrow Highway. The site is rectangular in shape and contains approximately 8,460 square feet of lot area and is improved with one building with two units of approximately 4,582 square feet. The site accommodates five stalls, including one accessible stall and the ability to park four cars being worked on within their unit. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding operations, the north, south, east, and west. And staff has reviewed the application and operational characteristics and has determined that with added conditions of approval, the proposed business will not have an adverse impact to the adjacent properties. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1822 entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow an Automobile Brake Repair and Tire Sale Business Within the I Industrial Zone pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the City's Municipal Code." Again, the location is at 5035 Comm View, our applicant JMC Automotive, and the case number CP870. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? No, we will now open it up to public hearing. If you wish to speak on this, you could step up now. Seeing none, public communication is closed on this, and we will now vote. Is there a motion to pass?
I'll go ahead and motion to pass.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I only have one question to staff. I think on the blueprints that I saw, the name at the very bottom said JCM Automotive.
Oh, did JCM or JMC?
Well, on their applic- On their application page, well, it's attachment number three, they wrote JMC Automotive.
Okay.
So I don't know what typo we're where. It's JMC?
Yes. I believe, were you out on Puente and Garvey before? Or you, on Puente and Garvey?
(inaudible)
All right.
Seeing the motion passes.
Welcome back.
And it passed, just so you know. All right, next item. God bless you too.
No problem.
There we go. Good evening, my name's Erica Ramirez, and I'm going to be presenting to you tonight the item of case number CP871. The case before you is a request for consideration of approval of a conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption at a restaurant located within the freeway commercial zone located at 3100 Big Dalton, Suite Number 180. The applicant is Tracy Aguirre and Gerardo Briseno of La Cocinita. The location of the existing restaurant is surrounded by freeway commercial to the north, and across the street is freeway commercial as well as multifamily. The surrounding uses include Walmart to the north, a vacant lot across Big Dalton, and there's also multifamily residences across Big Dalton as well. To the south is the 10 freeway. I'll leave it on this for a minute. The subject site is approximately 2.4 acres of land, and it includes 11,962 square foot building in which the existing restaurant occupies approximately 1,200 square feet. And there is also a separate 6,210 square foot building that is currently vacant. The proposal is to serve beer and wine consistent with the restaurant's operating hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thursday through Tuesday, closed on Wednesdays. The beer and wine is to be served for the purpose of onsite consumption within the restaurant and within the proposed outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating area is approximately 126 square feet. ABC has allotted four onsite licenses within the census tract. There's currently one in existence at the Chipotle Restaurant located at 13916 Garvey Avenue, Suite 104. The approval of the CUP will add a second license to the census tract, however, there will be a aggregate amount less than the allowable limit maintained in the census tract. In addition, conditions have been placed on the proposal approval to ensure the applicant's requests will not be detrimental to the public. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 18-20 hereby granting the conditional use permit case number CP871 as conditionally approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
What were the hours of operation?
8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They're closed on Wednesdays, so it's Thursday through Tuesday.
And what was the name of the restaurant?
La Cocinita.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I know where that one is. Okay, any more questions? All right, we will now open it up to public. You have three minutes to speak. If you wish to speak on it, state your name and residence.
My name is, all I want to say is, I'm happy to be a member of Baldwin- All I want to say is, I'm happy to be a member of Baldwin Park. I see, I grew up here in this city when I was, what, five, six, seven years old, and now I'm 31, so a couple of years ago. And I've seen it come a long ways. Our goal is to continue to show surrounding cities what a great community that we are. And with that said, we want to establish a great business, a restaurant, the same way In-N-Out started many, many years ago. So we hope that this is essentially our prototype, and we want it to be the first hub of our La Cocinita franchise that we will continue in the future. But we hope that you guys take in consideration that, you know, we've been really involved in the community. Our goal is to ensure that we provide great service, great opportunities for the local surrounding members that are nearby. But essentially, you know, we thank you for the opportunity to allow us to get our beer and wine, as that will allow us to create more revenue and generate more jobs and whatnot. But thank you for your time, and that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Quick question. What are your signature dishes, like from breakfast to afternoon and evening?
Is that you right over here?
Yeah.
I can't see that far, I'm sorry. Yeah, so our main signature dish is birria, which is beef, but a lot of birria fanatics actually said the traditional dish is chivo, which is goat. And since then, we've established that second dish, and we've had a lot of good turnout, but for breakfast, our chilaquiles. But if you check us out on Yelp, we have close to 200 reviews. We're about four and a half stars as far as ratings out of five, so we're doing something right. But our goal is to continue to improve on our service, the quality and the experience. Our biggest driving force is just the experience itself. Obviously, we want to provide great food, but essentially, by the time you leave, we want us, our mission statement is to make you feel like you went to grandma's kitchen to eat, and that's kind of what we have right there.
They also have great eggs and chorizo burritos over there.
Yes, we do.
The hours of operation, it was something you guys came up with.
That's center consistent hours of operation. Based on the fact that we are in an area where it's a little hidden, it's best for us to close down at 6 o'clock because we get a lot of funny business at nighttime. So our goal is that in the future, as we can acquire this license, we'll generate more foot traffic in the evening, that we can stay open longer. And it'll change from eight to six to more like 10 to eight, 10 to 10 during the week, and then the weekends maybe 10, 11, 12.
That building, I used to be Fitness 19, I think takes a lot of that.
Yeah, so Fitness 19 is now gone. Essentially, they're out there to get a workout, right? So we're probably not the best place to go eat if you're trying to get results. But yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before leaving the podium, would you please spell your last name for me?
Briseno, that's B for boy, R for rubber, I for ice, S for Sam, E for Eddie, N for Nancy, O for Oscar.
Got it.
He's head out of them.
Next question.
(inaudible).
What specials do you have? No, I just-
Well, again, thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to pass?
I motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We actually have to close public communications.
Public communications are now closed.
Honorable Chair, Commissioner, I certainly am very supportive of this, and I hope you all are. I think not only the benefits to La Cocinita, but also the benefits to the surrounding community, because we can drive more traffic and hopefully kind of revitalize that little area. So this is definitely a good step in the right direction.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, we had a motion by Edwin, and a second.
By me.
By Mario. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five to zero. All right, next on the board.
Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, the case before you is a request for consideration of a double-faced, I'm sorry, of a development agreement to allow the installation of one double-faced digital billboard on a property within the industrial I-zone pursuant to Section 153.210, Part 17, respectively of the City's Municipal Code. The location is 13100 Brooks Drive. The applicant is Becker Boards, Small LLC. Case number is DA 18-16. The applicant, Becker Boards, is requesting a development agreement to construct the digital billboard with a total height of 65 feet measured from the grade of the freeway. The proposed location of the billboard will be at the west side of the subject industrial complex, and it kind of levers over the existing building. The site is, like I said, it's zoned industrial I, with surrounding property to the south and east also zoned the same way industrial. The design of the billboard has been tentatively approved by the Design Review Committee pending Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council for approval of the development agreement. The proposed design is a more modern, it's basically an industrial type of design. It's a single pole, like I said, it's two-faced, digital, remotely controlled. The face themselves, each one will measure 672 square feet on each side. So to summarize the request, the development agreement will allow the applicant to construct the digital billboard at the location at 13100 Brooks Drive. And as part of the agreement, the applicant will pay an annual development fee to the city, and the term of that agreement is a term of 25 years. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1821 entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending that the City Council Approve and Adopt, One, the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, and Two, a development agreement for the construction of a new digital billboard. The location is 13100 Brooks Drive. The APN is 8535-023-086. The applicant is Becker Boards, Small LLC, and the case number is 18- or DA 18-16. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. I had a question. Is the billboard going to be erected near any neighborhoods, or?
No, the surrounding areas are all industrial. As you can see here, the blue represents the industrial areas. It's Brooks and Little John, and then River Grade Drive, or is it Road, to the west. And then further to the west is the 605 freeway. Again, those areas out there, further out, are not in the City of Baldwin Park, they're actually City of Irwindale. So no, there are no residential in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by any of the other commissioners?
I have a question. So the visibility of this is to catch the attention of the people on the freeway or River Grade?
It's both, really, but the height is measured from, it's 65 feet from the grade of the freeway is what they're allowed to do.
65?
65 feet from the grade of the freeway. So the freeway is actually at a higher grade, so at the site, you'll have a total, at the actual location, when you're standing beside it, it'll be about 85 feet.
Okay, that's what I-
So yeah, it's going to capture visibility from the 605 freeway, that is the intent, but you know, you'll also have River Grade.
Now, my next question, and you guys probably, I hope you guys know, they'll be allowed to show explicit-
No, as part of the development agreement, they are required to not show certain content.
Can you go back to the other page?
Yeah, the slide would have it, let me see if I can read it from there. So, number three, developers shall not utilize any of the displays on the billboard to advertise tobacco, tobacco products, including but not limited to vape devices, marijuana, gentlemen's clubs, adult entertainment businesses, sexually oriented materials, use sexually oriented images or language, cannabis or cannabis-related businesses, and illegal drugs. None of that would be allowed.
Okay.
And we have experience in enforcing that.
Good.
Because gentleman's clubs sometimes go up there.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? All right. Open to the public, you have three minutes to speak on it. State your name and residence.
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Joseph White. I'm representing Becker Boards Small. We're a privately-held billboard company, started in Phoenix, expanded into Los Angeles market three years ago. Baldwin Park was one of the first cities where we were able to construct a sign in the state of California, so obviously, it's extremely important to our company, and you know, what you guys have done to us is very beneficial, and we appreciate it. This is now our second project. And the first project is at the Leyla Harley-Davidson on Interstate 10. This is a location that we chose because it was on a separate freeway, which was on the 605. After looking at the location, clearly, we identified that it's heavily industrial over there, and as that was pointed out, there's no residents anywhere near. We are required to do a SEQUIS study, which is the environmental study, which assesses the impacts of the billboard, and because we were able to receive the negative declaration, that pretty much explained that there was no impacts whatsoever to the surrounding area due to the construction of this billboard. So for us, you know, this is a great opportunity, we greatly appreciate it, and we look forward to hopefully getting approval and moving towards council. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right, thank you. Any questions for them?
Well, one of the questions that I would have is, Baldwin Park has the authority to actually promote concerts and stuff like that on your billboards?
Yeah, so on the digital on the 10, we communicate with council, or not even council, the staff, at any moment. We get random emails from people within your city that say they have a special event going on. And, you know, for us, the benefit is you guys gave us an opportunity to build a billboard. So for us to design an ad for a local event, you know, that's obviously a cost to us, but it's, at the end of the day, you know, we look at the big picture. So for us, you know, we've reached, anytime anyone's ever reached out to us from your city, I personally receive it. I send it off to our graphic designer, our office manager, and we design up an ad, we send it back to them, say, is this what you want? They give us the dates they want us to run, and we put it up. We've always done that, it's something that's actually really easy for us to do. We design ads all day, every day. So for us to benefit a local community and an event is something that, to me, obviously, I understand the benefit, but it's something that's very simple for us. So, you know, we like it, everyone appreciates it, and it's something that we will always do as a company, because we get the benefit, you know, beyond just that one ad. So yes, certainly. And the restriction that you asked about, this is not only in your ordinance, but we've taken it a step further in the development agreement. The development agreement, if I'm in default of that, technically, the city could terminate that agreement. So if we were advertising one of these products, it's not a fine that we would receive. Technically, we would be in violation of the agreement, which is the development agreement, which obviously, if they were to terminate that, we would lose the right to have the billboard. So the enforcement there is another level in comparison to what typically is on the streets, which is with the rest of the billboards in the city, with the exception of what we have at the I-10. We're the only ones with a development agreement in your city that have actually constructed the billboards. So, you know, we live up to our agreements, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Ads are like in five to 10 cent intervals, or like in between your twins, five to 10 seconds?
Yeah, so the state has requirements that we must adhere to. On a digital billboard, the state requires ads to sit stagnant for a minimum of eight seconds.
Okay.
So we can't move any faster than that, and there's no full motion on any of the digitals.
All right. Any more questions? All right, thank you.
Sir, before leaving the podium, would you spell your last name for me, please?
Yes. White, like the color, W-H-I-T-E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? All right, public communications is closed. Is there a motion to pass?
I'll motion to pass.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Chairman Rooney, just for explanation, this matter then goes to City Council, and City Council will make the final determination on this. Your recommendation is going to be forwarded to City Council.
Thank you. All right, next, I believe, is report to the officer?
No, Chair, the next item is the case number AZC 186.
Okay.
For a citywide zoning code amendment in regards to the ADU, and we have Debbie Lynn presenting that item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Debbie Lynn, I'm a contract, I'm a consultant that has been hired by the city to prepare an ordinance for the accessory dwelling unit provision that will go into the zoning code. The recommendation tonight is going to be to continue the item, which is due to the fact that after the drafting of the ordinance, a study session was held by the City Council on the 15th, and a number of questions came up that need to be answered, and some further work needs to be done. So we're going to recommend that this item be continued until September 26th, Planning Commission hearing. However, this evening, we wanted to introduce the ordinance, explain a little bit of background on the ordinance, why you're being presented with this, and discuss some of the key components of the ordinance, and hopefully answer all your questions. So by way of background, in 2017, new legislation took effect, changing the government code regulations on what are known as secondary, residential second units. That legislation has been in effect for a long time. Your city has in your zoning code provisions to allow second units. This new legislation effectively eliminates the old statute and now adopts what they call accessory dwelling units. And the legislation was passed in order to help spark more housing development, to help ease the housing crisis. That was the thinking behind the passing of the statute. The legislation basically says that these are requirements cities have to comply with, you have to approve accessory dwelling units, applications when they come in, and there are several different types of unit, types, forms that can take place. But you are basically, cities are required to approve an application for an ADU if it meets the statute. The statute also says that cities can adopt their own ordinance. It allows some control over the location and design and operation of accessory dwelling units that are what we call newly constructed, meaning a unit that's either a new detached unit on a lot, or a unit attached to an existing dwelling unit on a single-family lot. The statute says that your ordinance has to allow an accessory dwelling unit in any residentially-zoned property. You are allowed to restrict the, right now, you are allowed to restrict the lots, to those lots that have at least one single-family residence on them. You're allowed to have a minimum lot size for newly constructed units, and you're allowed to establish minimum unit sizes and, well, maximum unit sizes. Minimums, the state says, has to at least be, you have to at least allow an efficiency. This ordinance, in essence, says that for newly constructed units in the city, you have to have an 8,000-square-foot lot. It can go in any residential zone. The maximum size of the unit is 600 square feet. You have to provide one parking space unless the state provisions apply, which say that you cannot require parking space. And those provisions are if it's in, if you've got a location that's within a quarter mile of a public transit stop, and the state defines public transit as bus stops, mass transit, anything with a fixed route. So, excuse me, in newly constructed units, you also can apply the zoning requirements for the district. You can require that it be architecturally and design, architecturally and materially similar to the main unit. And unless you fall within those four exclusions that the state put forward for parking, you are required to, are allowed to require a parking space. So this ordinance that we drafted states all that. But the state legislation also says that there are certain things that you really kind of have to go along with. One of them is you have to approve a unit if it's proposed in what's called an accessory structure on the lot. That minimum lot sizes don't apply to that. You, as long as the accessory structure is there, and that is right now loosely defined as garages, poolhouses, carports, and similar accessory structures, if an application comes in to convert one of those structures to an ADU, the city must approve it with a building permit only. And that those units, you cannot require any parking for. So this, or ordinance in your city reflects those requirements on the part of the state. The statute also says that you have to permit an ADU within the existing living area of an existing- an existing dwelling unit. You can set the maximum square footage on those, and we've established that at 600 square feet in this proposed ordinance. And those also are permits that are to be approved by building permit only. So there's a little distinction. You have more flexibility in the control of a newly constructed accessory dwelling unit, which we've put forward in this ordinance for you. But when it comes to accessory dwelling units that are going to be, excuse me, in an accessory structure, or within the existing living space of an existing residential unit, it pretty much, you have to go with what the state says. The state also says you don't have to adopt this ordinance. It's up to the cities if they want to, but if you don't, you have absolutely no controls at all. So it's to the city's benefit to adopt their own ordinances and put as many controls in there as they possibly can. There's no deadline for the adoption of the ordinance. It's purely up to every local jurisdiction as to whether they want one and when they want to adopt it. At the workshop, the City Council pretty much had concerns about certain streets in the city that really would be impacted by ADUs coming in to accessory structures, or as newly constructed structures that would not be allowed, or the city would not be allowed to require parking for, and that everybody would be then parking on the street if they didn't park in the driveway of the primary unit. So staff is going to come back with some study on what streets those might be, and a recommendation on whether those particular areas can be excluded from the ordinance. And right now, there is a provision in the state government code that says that a local jurisdiction can designate those areas where they are not permitted, but it has to be based on criteria such as the adequacy of water or sewer, public infrastructure, or whether it's a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, and whether traffic impacts would occur. So that's the part of the legislation we're going to take advantage of, if we can, and take a look at certain areas that may be severely impacted by traffic as a result of allowing ADUs in that area, and possibly excluding them, or handling them in a special manner. But that all, is information yet to be generated, and we won't know what the results of that study are for another month or so, I guess.
Yes.
For that reason, staff is recommending continuing, oh, once we've answered your questions and all, we are recommending continuing the item to the September 26th meeting. And that concludes our presentation, and be happy to answer your questions.
Just talk real loud.
Honorable Commissioners, Luis Rodriguez, interim Development Director. I just wanted to see if Debbie can just sort of clarify one point, because I'm a little confused as well. On the limitations regarding the 8,000-square-foot lot size that we're proposing, you mentioned that that would not apply if there's existing accessory structures. So if it's under 8,000 square feet, they can't build a new ADU because it doesn't meet the lot size for R1 zone, or?
Well, the distinction is, there is a minimum lot size established in the ordinance for what we are calling newly constructed units. And those are units that are basically constructed from scratch. They-
This is the second store, the second dwelling unit ordinance?
Oh, excuse me, no. In the, in the proposed-
In the proposed.
ADU ordinance, right. In your existing second unit ordinance, you have a 5,000-square-foot lot minimum, in the one that's currently on the books. This ordinance would require an 8,000-square-foot lot to build a new unit.
So if, if a 5,000-square-foot lot built an accessory structure, and then five years down the road, they have an accessory structure, can they convert that?
They could, because the, the ordinance cannot prohibit the conversion of an accessory structure to an ADU.
Okay. I just wanted the Commissioners to be aware that that-
Point.
-8,000-square-foot limit may not be the catch-all for everything, because you can still eventually convert something if it gets constructed later on. And then to bolster the instructions that were given by the City Council, yes, we were asked, planning staff, to work with Public Works to identify if there was any substandard streets, how would it impact a parking district? And again, as Debbie mentioned, I think we're looking at whether or not traffic flow and fire safety would be our, you know, our key threshold, or indicator to look at in identifying these areas. And I think we're just going to do it through language, rather than to actually look at a map and say, this, not here, not here, not here. So I think we're just going to do it through verbiage in our ordinance to identify parking, you know, no, no ADUs in a parking district, no ADUs in a substandard street, and maybe where there's red-painted curbs, or something to that effect. So we're going to work with Public Works, Sam Gutierrez, to identify the potential areas, but also to make sure the language captures these areas in terms of moving forward. That's it. I hope I-
Okay.
Didn't mess you up, Debbie. Sorry.
So, in layman's term, in layman, I mean me. Basically, they could only add another room, or a small house in the back, or whatever, if they have 8,000 feet on their lot, correct?
New construction for a new unit.
Yes.
8,000-square-foot feet would be the, it's the minimum lot size to be able to do that.
Okay. And my second question is, does an AU, an ADU pertain to, like condos and stuff also?
Well, our ordinance, the way it's written, it states that it has to be an 8,000-square-foot lot with one single-family residence on the lot, and only one.
Good.
So it can't be duplexes. And again, that's for new construction. Accessory buildings, again, on a single-family lot can be converted, no matter what the lot size. But in a condominium complex, you don't have accessory structures associated with the unit, so I don't think that should be a concern, at least you don't typically. So I don't think that should be a-
There are many, many condos being built right now in Baldwin Park, and there's already a horrendous traffic issue. So I'm glad to hear that.
So these are R1 zones, is that what it is?
Well, it's, you have to allow them in any zone, so it's your, our, I'm sorry, I have to look back at your zoning, but it's the, you have four residential zoning districts in your city, and it, we have to allow them in all four.
So first off, thank you for coming and giving this presentation. I kind of, I know that several months back, I had asked staff when we were going to be in compliance with SB 229, and I know that Abraham said something was in the works, so I'm glad that today has come. I'm an advocate for increased affordable housing, so this is a move in the right direction. My concern is, is parking, because we already have tight streets. So the exemption to requiring parking, it's anything within a quarter-mile of transit, I think that our entire city probably falls in that category. I think almost like we have public transit in every, like, running on every main street. So, so I think most of our city is probably going to be exempt from that parking issue. So that really creates a really big issue. So, again, I am absolutely for implementing this, because I think it is going to help us solve, not solve, but work towards solving our housing crisis, not only in our city, but also in the surrounding community. Again, I don't know if there's a way of studying a dual implementation of, you know, high-risk areas, where we can also, at the same time, implement some sort of parking permit if it already doesn't exist, so that we can at least try to mitigate the potential of current homeowners not being able to park on the streets. So, but thank you very much for coming.
Are there any more questions?
I, I do, I, so this is just voluntarily for anyone that's interested in building a second dwelling on their home, an ADU. For example, I know in the past, I've heard people converting their garages, and is there, is the city going to be going around looking for those converted garages, or is it?
Well, I think, I don't want to speak for the city, but I know a common problem in cities that are built out are illegal garage conversions. So I think they are not allowed right now in the city of Baldwin Park without providing, you know, meeting the zoning and providing parking and that sort of thing. So they, it would not be allowed right now, because it would create an existing, it would create a nonconformity. And the fact that these people might be doing it without, they're not doing it with them with building permits makes them illegal conversions. So if you have an illegal conversion on the ground, and someone comes in and says, oh, now I can make it a legal ADU, the first thing they have to do is legalize that structure, that unit, because they have no permits for it now. It would have to meet the setback requirements, there are some setback requirements even for, in this statute, for accessory structures. They would have to first legalize it from the standpoint of what your current zoning says, before it could then be converted to an ADU. So you'd have some, perhaps some recourse, depends on the situation, with that, you know, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis in that situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, if I might add, or I have another question. So at this point, once we come into compliance with these new regulations, if somebody wanted to come in and convert, or, you know, do something, add an accessory dwelling unit, now they would only have to apply for like a building permit, just as if any other remodel on a home, there would be no noticing, no, like, the-
The current process is a design review first, and then a plan check. This is going to be purely ministerial, so it'd only be plan check.
Got it.
Straight through plan check.
The one positive thing about capturing some of the illegal conversions and then making them legal is that there will be an inspection with the building permit, so thereby making them safer. Windows will be checked to make sure that they're properly sized and height to, in case there's a fire, to be able to get out, that all the wiring in the, in the unit are safe, and everything else that would make the unit safe and not hazardous. So it would eliminate a lot of hazardous conditions.
So that would be something very important to inform the public. So if they do have something like that, that, I don't know, we inform, I don't know, have some kind of incentive for them to actually get permits for them and make them safe.
Would definitely add value to their property, because then the building permit gets acknowledged by the county assessor, so property values would go up. So that could be something as an incentive to think about.
And so when applying for a building permit, the only home, the only part of the home that's subject to inspection or conformity would be the ADU, right? So like if, let's say now we require fire sprinklers in homes, you're not going to require the entire home to have fire sprinklers, only the ADU?
Correct, but I don't think fire sprinklers are going to be required for most ADUs that are going to come in play, yeah. Usually, multifamily residentials may be required to put fire sprinklers.
These ADUs, would they be big enough to have like a one-bedroom only, or two-bedrooms?
We actually do not limit, the new ordinance would not limit how many bedrooms. The prior code, we had limitations in the number of bedrooms, because we had minimum unit size. In this case, the building division, the building code will govern that in terms of how big a bedroom has to be. So depending on the size of their ADU, they will have to, you know, make sure that their bedrooms are big enough. You can't have a closet for a bedroom. So, you know, you have to consider the size, too. So if we're going for a maximum of 600 square feet for a new, newly constructed ADU, how many bedrooms can you really fit in there pursuant to the building code?
Okay. I do recall that, that there was, I guess, a certain percentage of the existing single-family, that's what they would permit, I believe. I mean, I've seen this a long time ago, I haven't seen that again. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I do have a question. In a situation with the ordinance like this one, as technical as it is, can they be required to actually, if they're going to build ADU, that the building that's already in place also needs to be up to code exactly as the one is being built?
You know, our prior ordinance, our secondary dwelling ordinance, and typical practice for planning was to make sure that everything is brought up to current standards before they can add a single-square-foot. But Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, they will not, we will not be able to enforce that part.
That is my understanding right now. I think if you're in this case where you have to, or an applicant wants to construct a unit within the existing living area of an existing home, then the unit would have to meet building code standards, and so it would, that, at least the structure would have to be to code, because the ADU has to meet code, so.
Right. That's understandable, it's just that, let's, an example would be that there's a single unit in the front that looks like it was built back in 1930.
Right.
I would say there would have to be some kind of an upgrade.
Oh, I see what you're saying. And yes, there's no, I don't believe the city has an ability to impose that requirement on anything except, any of the requirements except on the ADU itself.
So I don't see the benefit of the city accepting an ordinance like this.
Well, the, the thing is, the city needs to accept it so they could implement their own standards and rules for it. So, because if it's not accepted, then it goes back to state rules, which the city has no control over. The city won't be able to implement certain demands on them building on their property. They'll have to go with what the state says. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
I have a quick question. Debbie, on these ADUs, they don't all have to require separate utilities, right?
No. That's correct.
Okay. But they do have the option to install a separate meter, separate gas.
Correct.
So I think when, to answer the Commissioner's question, in terms of whether a permit and an inspection would trigger upgrading the primary unit, they wouldn't necessarily go in to inspect it, they're just going to go inspect the work for the ADU. However, most building officials will cite, or will, I mean, for safety and hazardous conditions, they do have to say, hey, this front unit, though, the wiring is exposed and it's dangerous, it could cause a fire. So, yeah, in those instances, when there's a hazardous condition, they're obligated to, to enforce and ask for corrections of the main. But they wouldn't necessarily go in, inspect the accessory dwelling unit, and then go into the main house to look for other problems. That's not the charge of our inspectors. But again, if they're on the property, and they notice something hazardous that can be dangerous, they're obligated to, you know, make it safe for the owners. So I hope that makes sense.
All right. Any more?
My, my next question on this subject is the parking thing. Are we, or are we not allowed to, to state on an ordinance like this whether there has to be two carports for these new ADUs?
Or at least a driveway. Or at least a driveway where you can park two cars.
I think the, the state, state statute overrides that, right? It's clearly saying you don't have to require parking.
Well, you are allowed to, unfortunately, it's a yes-no. Yes, you can require one parking space per unit if it's a newly constructed unit. However, if that newly constructed unit is within a quarter-mile of a transit stop, or there are a couple of other scenarios where you, where the state says you can't require parking, which I doubt apply in this city, but this city's issue will be the fact that every location is within a quarter-mile of a transit stop. So the good news is, yes, you can require one space, but you can't really-
Enforce it.
-enforce that because of the location, if, you know, because of your locational issues. So it's almost a moot point.
And to add to that, on the other hand, if it's, if it's- And to add to that, on the other hand, if it's, if it's parking within the main structure with, that is attached, you cannot convert that attached garage to the main structure because then you're eliminating parking. I believe the ordinance states
The statute is clear about that.
That it has to, you cannot convert a space that is not livable.
An attached garage.
Correct.
Correct. If you're building it within the existing square footage of a unit, you can only build it within the existing quote "living" area, which is defined as habitable area, and it goes on to state, this does not include garages. So if you have a, an attached garage to your home, you can't convert that. It's just detached garages you can convert.
Can we be notified of the next meetings that are going to take place? Because I haven't heard, this is the first time seeing it on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. As a matter of fact, it's got to come back to you guys first, you commissioners, before it goes to city council, so.
But I would like to attend the workshop if there's any others that are going to be put in place.
Another study session.
Because she stated that there was already a number of questions raised by residents, and I definitely wasn't informed of this particular workshop.
The, the workshop was really a last-minute, like, request.
Okay.
It was, it was held last week, you know, so last Wednesday. And we were directed to do it, you know, to have a workshop. But I felt that there was no benefit in having a workshop after you made some sort of recommendation to the city council. So we wanted to make sure that we can present it to the city council, and if there were any major issues, change those things, continue your hearing, and then come back for you to recommend the approval to the city council at that point. Because there was no point in having a workshop after your recommendation. So we were on a time crunch.
Okay.
And, and the workshop was actually similar in how we present it right now to you. I mean, it was exactly the same presentation, and it was the same discussion, and we shared the same concerns. So I think the city council just wanted to address any concerns early on before it got to them. But we also wanted to make sure that you were aware and what these concerns were, what directions we were given. And again, you also have the discretion of asking for more information before we come back to you and, and address it.
Okay. So can we get a copy of the questions that were raised by the residents from that workshop? Email to us?
Sure, I think that's, yeah, we can put something together, but I think most of the questions came from the, from the city council.
Okay.
I don't recall any
I don't recall any residents.
Nobody from the public came up to address it.
Okay, I thought you had, you had stated that, that there were concerns by the residents, so that's why.
I apologize if I said residents, I meant that there were concerns raised by the council members, or, I'm sorry.
Not our problem.
The only issues that were brought up by residents is were not even, have not to do anything with ADU, they were, had to do with cannabis issues. And that was during public comment, and that was it. And there was no direct concerns or questions from the public regarding the proposed ordinance.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right, well, I think that's it, right? Thank you.
Opened public communications, then entertain a motion to continue.
Yes, so public communications is now open. Anyone wish to speak, state your name and address.
Good evening, chairman and commissioner and planner. My name's Jimmy Yu, I am at 3703 Main Avenue.
Would you?
3703 Main Avenue, Palm Park. I'm here to comment on the ADU. I think I'm the first one then, by hearing, by hearing the, the
I'm sorry, can you read?
Can you guys hear me better now?
There you go, much better.
I want to comment on the ADU ordinance. I, I think the current, the ADU is proposed by the state to promote affordable housing, which we currently have about 1 million in California. Even if we pass all ADU ordinance in every city adopt to it, it wouldn't fulfill these affordable housing in 10 years. Now, the current code in Palm Park gives the residents, assuming if they fit all the scenario, they can build 1,000 square feet. The new proposed ADU ordinance only limits 600. I understand that the city's concerned with preserving the city and also parking, but I think the problem doesn't come in from, the problem doesn't come in from the ADU ordinance, I think the problem comes in that the permit is way too hard to get. That's what happened with LA Cities. LA City has a very strict rules and very, it's a prolonged procedure on getting ADU done. So what happened, the last, throughout all this year, we have a lot of illegal build in the city. We should be more concerned about the safety of the building? Can it withstand more than an hour of fire? If there is one, do we have, do we, do we meet all standards? Is, is a window high enough instead of converting our garages? So I'm, I'm here trying to, trying to, trying to propose that the city look at it differently. We, we can try to put in certain language that makes our neighborhood better, in a way that is, is, fits all the characteristic of, of, of single-family zones. But in the same time, if, if city were to limit it to 600 and also have lots of, it does not promote affordable housing, and it doesn't encourage, and it doesn't encourage residents to make that kind of change. Because going through, going to permit, going to the building, building materials on a 600,000, 600 square feet ADU, that would cost $120,000 easy. That's not small chunk of money. We wanted to do everything properly so that we can increase our house value in the same time. We can try to maybe rent it out or have a different family member live there whatsoever. However, the, the purpose code limited to 600 defaults the purpose because currently we're at 1,000. So I hope, I hope, I hope chairman, commissioner, and planner take that into consideration. Because I was shocked when, when, when that was limited to six, the proposal was to limit to 600, I was shocked because that provide no incentive at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, would you say your last name?
Yu. Yu.
May I ask a question? Or actually, let's close or continue public communication?
You can, you can ask a question, yeah.
Is there a specific reason why we decided to decrease from 1,000 to 600?
Yes, yes. Again, it was kind of the discussion that I was getting, explained to Commissioner Flores was, if you have a 1,000 square foot ADU, you're going to have more bedrooms. More bedrooms means more parking requirement. Think about it. So, so you have a bigger unit, you can fit probably two, maybe three bedrooms, you'll have a family there, husband, wife, probably two cars, kids that grow up will have a car. Now you have three, three extra vehicles. In a 600 square foot unit, you'll have less bedrooms because of the building code, probably less bedrooms. The minimum, the minimum lot size for 8,000 square feet kind of touched on that as well because of the bigger lot size, you might, you might be able to park more vehicles on the lot. That was the idea that we had in, with the prior director. You know, bigger lot size for a minimum requirement and a smaller unit might help address some of the parking issues.
So I, I think our, our hands may be tied, but is there, I mean, is there a way to, in the ordinance, say, like, kind of write it out in a way that, say, like, if it's the minimum 600 feet, you don't need the parking or we don't require the parking? But if it's anything greater than that, up to the 1,000?
It really doesn't matter because we are so close to public transit stops that it's pretty much going to exempt the entire city from parking requirements.
So with the parking requirements, with us being so close to the transit, does that prohibit them from doing the 1,000 feet?
No, the, the ordinance will prohibit them from going anything above 600 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the ordinance that we're, we're putting that limitation. And Debbie also mentioned that there could be legislation that could require us to change that again in the future. We're, we're going to wait to see what happened, what happens in September with the new legislation because they keep changing things. So we might have to come back again and change those things. But in the meantime, we have to do something, otherwise we're, we're going to go back to the state requirements and we have no control over that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public commu, communication? Huh? Seeing no one's here, go ahead.
Thank you, and, and I, I'm here because I, I want to, I want to have my thoughts being here. The, the current secondary dwelling unit code, which Palm Park enforces, allows up to 1,000. However, two-bedroom starts at 1,050. Under the current code, Palm Park has purposely limited to two-bedroom, therefore possibly less bedroom, less people, less whatever. Has, has the city done any research on how many illegal build there is in the city?
I don't believe so.
Research on, can, can you repeat the question? Has the city done research on?
How many illegal builds, for example, garage conversion that's not currently?
We don't have the resources or the staff to do that kind of research. You know, code enforcement is a department that would be enforcing illegal conversions. They don't, they do it mostly on a reactive basis, so if there's a complaint is when they, they don't necessarily go and pick and choose houses, they'll do it on a, on a complaint base. And that is a public safety issue, so they will enforce that. But no, as far as a study or any kind of research done as to how many they've done, there's, there's no study done.
Just a number that I wanted to throw out, LA County, an incorporated part of LA County, has only 400-some house that's up to ADU standard after they allowed it. Pinochle that, that's more than 100,000 house that's not up to code. And I think a lot of reason has to do with the restriction that's coming from either the county park or whatsoever. So I hope the commission takes that into consideration because if you limit to 600 square feet, then whoever has a illegal dwelling unit right now, just don't convert. And, and the city's perspective is, I want to make sure that safety comes first. I want to make sure that the, illegal garage conversion probably takes, I don't know, I, I'm not a construct, I'm not in the construction business, probably 10,000 or you just not park your car there and then you have all the car in the driveway. If you wanted to add a second, ADU, I would assume that from a brand-new construction, if you have a capability, you want to implement a garage over there. If you plan to rent it out in the future, you want to make sure your tenant doesn't take the bus, although you can get away with the code and say, hey, I'm within 0.5 miles from public transit, and I, I don't have to put that in. But however, you wanted to make housing that, you want to have people live there for a longer time, you, you want to make sure that they stay longer, then you probably want to build it, if you can, comply with the code up to standard. I, I, for, for a lot of city right now, the current language is we convert a garage, you don't even have to provide any parking. That didn't solve parking problem, didn't help the city either. So want to make sure that my thoughts being here.
Thank you, Mr. Yu.
Thank you. All right, seeing that there's no one else, public communication is now closed.
I got a question, I got a question. Yeah. My, my question, and I guess my confusion is, ADU, I'm, I'm assuming that we're talking about a guest house, no? Not, a secondary unit is what Mr. Yu is talking about, if I'm not mistaken, a secondary unit, meaning you could build a house which is with as many bedrooms as you want, or we're limited to two, it's limited to two. But ADU, we're, we're saying it's, it's addressing only a guest home, no?
Well, it's, it's really a retitle, the state has required us to retitle it too because the previous state law called it a secondary dwelling unit. Our current secondary dwelling unit ordinance says the maximum is 1,000 square feet. The underlying residential, for example, the underlying residential R1 zone says that for you to have a two-bedroom house or unit, you need to have 1,050 square feet. So you can't have more than two bedrooms in the current code. However, in the new ADU, if you can fit two bedrooms in a 600 square foot unit and meet building code, you can do it. We're not limiting the number of bedrooms.
Right.
That, that would be up to building and safety with our building code as to how big a bedroom has to be. So the current code kind of puts them in a pinch too because the underlying R1 zone says that for you to have a unit, the minimum unit size in the R1 zone is 900 square feet. So if you have an R1 zone lot over 5,000 square feet, because that's the minimum lot size, and you're able to fit a secondary dwelling unit meeting all of the development standards, it has to be, under current code, between 900 and 1,000 square feet. No less than 900, no more than 1,000, one-bedroom. That's current code. Or that's the way we enforce it.
Which makes sense.
All right.
Is it possible to get a copy of that ordinance?
The current code or?
Yeah, the current one.
Yeah, of course, we can give you that.
Please, just wanted to take a glance at it.
Okay.
And with that being said, if there's no other questions, I will make a motion to continue this to our September 26 meeting.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0 to continue.
And the reason why we take the continuance after you open the public hearing is so that in theory, the public hearing is open still.
For the next one.
For the next one, right.
Okay.
So you don't have to re-notice.
All right. And I believe that is it, am I correct?
I wanted to discuss another item for, we have nothing on reports of officers, but for staff communication, planning staff has been tasked to look at two things, public art, public art mainly, but public art proposed by the city and public art proposed by a private developer. For public art proposed by the city, the city council will make that determination. They can defer and get comment from, or a recommendation, defer to get recommendation from the planning commission, or, I'm sorry, an appointed five-body, five-member body or group, such as the planning commission. But in, in terms of public art proposed by a private developer, it has to go through an appointed five-member body. So in discussions with the CEO, the city manager, he suggested that we try to see if we can come up with a resolution for, actually, suggested that the planning commission be the cultural arts commission for public art. We looked into the code and we have to buy resolution, the city council has to buy resolution, appoint. So just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. We're going to be working on a resolution to appoint the planning commission as a cultural arts commission to review public art that's proposed on private property, and possibly to review proposals and make a recommendation to the city council for art proposed in, by the public, I'm sorry, by the city in public places. And I just wanted to give you an example of something that came in. The project that's being, currently being constructed at Pacific, the Pacific Villas, they have been assessed a public art fee. I don't know the, the exact amount, and I don't remember the ballpark either, but they're proposing public art. They want to propose a public art instead of paying the fee. And the art that they're proposing, they're going to put it on the wall facing Pacific. I have a sketch, and I've been in communication with the developer, and he's, he has hired a artist, and it's going to be a wall sculpture. And so I have this plan that I wanted to bring, or I'm sorry, this sketch I wanted to bring to your attention that may come to you if you are appointed. So in discussion with the developer, I told them I'll bring it to the commission, I'll make them aware, but they cannot make a decision because they're not appointed. So you cannot make a decision this evening. I, I don't know that you would, and the attorney can, can advise if you can even provide a comment at this point. But I did bring the sketch, and I just wanted to go ahead and bring it to your attention that you may be appointed as a cultural arts commission, okay?
In that case, I would recommend the commission not discuss it, but can certainly look at it right now.
Yeah.
All right.
So, again, this is a wall, a wall sculpture that's being proposed, and we have commented Again, this is wall, a wall sculpture that's being proposed, and we have commented to take it back to the drawing board, literally. So, in this thing here, they're proposing, uh, a banner that says Lucky's Ranch, this is, um, a bust of, uh, Lucky Baldwin, and they are trying to incorporate, um, yes, different things, the cattle grazing, the, so we told them, let's go back, look at the red car Pacific lecture, there's a little bit more history in One Park that you could consider, over in and out, or, you know, different things of One Park. So, wanted you to take a look at this, um, and it might come if you are appointed.
Without swaying your opinion, uh, yeah, staff had certain comments about the, the folks holding the banner, and, and, I'm not gonna say which way we commented, uh, I did research on Lucky Baldwin, and the only thing I did, I am gonna disclose is that I didn't see any.
So, if this, um, this commission or, for the arts is appointed, how soon would this happen, like, how urgent is this?
Well, we're trying to determine the appointment, um, as soon as possible because staff is also working with, um, a contractor to do, uh, public art along Ramona. So, and that's more Sam Gutierrez project, uh, Public Works, because it's proposed by city and public right of way. Um, and again, we need to establish cultural arts commission in case the city council wants to defer, um, to the planning commission or the cultural arts commission, um, on that project. So we're being kinda pushed to do this as fast as possible, al- aside from the fact that they also want to, you know, put their public art as well. Okay? I have nothing further.
Alright, thank you. Since there's nothing further on the agenda, um, motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Lucky Baldwin, huh? Lucky Baldwin. Good old luck.